I'm going to turn it over to you to make sort of a presentation.
All right, I want to welcome everybody to our Des Moines City Council meeting. Prior to our meetings often we have great things to talk about, and this evening we have special representatives from the Parks Foundation and Friends. And so I think what we want to do is have them talk about what's going on here, and I think they've got a little presentation. Jane?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. We have seven of our board members here. Our vice -- I serve as president, Jane Heine. Our vice president is Dr. Michael Eberle. Secretary Treasurer is Amy Galloway. Amy, wave. Dick Thornton here, Cindy Fenter, and Kimberly Hansen. Suzy Malhop is also on our board, as is Janice Ruon, and both are out of town today. So it's good to be here. We would like to -- we have been going for four years and have been raising money for various things. Probably have 250 to 275 members in our group. And we would like -- this is giving back to the community. Nobody gets a salary, nobody does anything through this, but we, for this current time, for 2011 through the month of February, are giving back $50,554 to our community in services that we have done. And I'd just like to quickly read off. We've given money to yoga in the park, trail maps, Dr. Crompton visit, exercise equipment in a couple of different parks, swimming lessons scholarships for students that do not have enough money to do swimming lessons, community garden, lilacs, junior golf, trash bash, free flicks, park benches, Union Park gardens, and also signs, some signs around the city where historical signs we want to work on. So we just wanted you to know that we're out there, that we're doing these things, and we are moving forward. And we just every once in a while want to get out in front of you all to know that something is happening. We're kind of quiet for a while, but every once in a while we need to get out there. Anybody else have anything to say?
Forgot Joe.
Joe! Oh, Joe was out. Well, Joe, I'm sorry. I said Amy Galloway. Joe Galloway is there. He's our park board president.
More than twice to join.
Yeah. It's $20 to join or more if you would wish to add a little bit to it, but get that out there and know that we are here. And I'm very sorry, Joe. You're one of the most important ones.
Now, I've got to tell you, accepting this for the city of Des Moines is, Jane said, and I think it's sort of a misstatement, says that these people don't do anything. I wish that everybody didn't do anything just exactly like you guys are and could show this kind of benefit to our city, because this shows what volunteers can do. They raise money, they help with programs, they get our citizens involved in so many different ways in our community, and part of which is the reason why Des Moines is reaching such high standards in stature, not only in our regional area, but nationally and internationally, for the great things we do, a great place to live, a great place to have a business, a great place to raise a family, and a great place for young people to have careers. And this is the reason why. So I want to thank everyone that's involved, and the Friends of the Des Moines Parks, and the Des Moines Parks Board, and all of our other folks that volunteer through neighborhood associations and everything else, and work as hard as these people have to take very little credit but get a lot done. So let's give them a great big thank you. Let's put this right a little bit. Let Thornton hold on a part of it. We'll get this out of the way.
Okay.
All right, we're going to start our city council meeting in a few minutes. Make sure both eyes are open.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right, we're going to start our city council meeting in a few minutes. I want to welcome everybody to the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board meeting for February 27th. I will ask the clerk to take roll, please.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Grease?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, item two is a hearing on the following, and we're going to take each one of these separately. A is an amendment to the Municipal Housing Agency annual budget for the current fiscal year ending June 30, 2012. I will ask if there's anyone in the audience who would want to make a comment regarding that. Do you have anybody, a staff member, that would quickly want to talk about that agenda? I think Doug is not here, right?
Alan McKinley is available if there are questions. We talked about it briefly this morning at workshop, but we'd be happy to answer any additional questions that might have come up.
All right. Any of our governing board members have any questions regarding that presentation that we talked about earlier about the Municipal Housing Agency and the annual budget? Seeing none, let's go ahead and close the hearing on item two A, and ask if we could have a motion to amend that Municipal Housing Agency annual budget for the current fiscal year ending June 30, 2012. Have a motion, anybody? It's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That item passes. Item two is a proposed Municipal Housing Agency annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2013. Alan, would you want to give us about a 30-second presentation just to -- bring us up to date on that and for the record, please?
Alan McKinley, deputy city manager. As we reviewed this morning at the workshop, the 2013 budget for the Housing Services Department reflects a approximately $200,000 reduction in federal grant funding. There will be two options available to address that reduction. One would be through a simple reduction in staff, which will also result in a reduction in services that will need to happen sometime between now and during fiscal 13, and certainly at the early part of it. There is an option that will be presented to council on March 12th workshop that would be a possibility of looking at making a capital expenditure that will result in us, the city, and the Housing Services Department to reduce their operating costs primarily in the areas of utility and rent, also to generate some outside revenue. And if that is a -- if the council wants to go in that direction, we will pursue that, which will result in maintaining existing services as opposed to reducing them.
All right, any questions? Seeing none from the board, is there anybody in the audience who would like to make any Municipal Housing, this is -- comes through HUD, and we are seeing significant reductions in so many domestic programs coming out of Congress, and this one is one of the ones that is going to be touched by these reductions. We are going to try to find ways to work around it and with staff and with this board, and try to meet all of our obligations and the needs of our people that so much depend on our housing and Housing Agency. So thanks for the presentation, and we're going to continue working on it. That fiscal year begins July 1 and goes into next year through June 30.
Mayor, will that be a self-supporting program? It'll all come out of the revenues, the expenses covered?
It's supposed to.
Yes, revenues come from primarily two sources, both the federal grant revenue and then rent payments as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, ma'am?
I have something to say about this federal housing that I live in the Elsie Mason Manor.
Could you give us your name and address, please, for the record?
My name is Dorian Hodge. My address is 430 Grand Avenue, apartment 1401, Des Moines 50309.
Thank you.
I have this book, it's the Apartment Finder, and the Elsie Mason Manor is stiffing the government and me for $759 a month. I pay only $198 of that, and they told me that the funds that Elsie Manor gets come from the city. The city applies for HUD money, and this is city applied for HUD money as opposed to if I were to be given a Section 8 and I went out and chose a place, and I certainly wouldn't choose a place for $758. And if I did, I would get a whole lot more than they have at Elsie Mason Manor. Elsie Mason Manor is under bad management. If you make a complaint about burglaries, people entering your apartment, stalkings, harassments, and a number of other crimes, or even maintenance, they'll give you eviction notice and suggest you get out. And I think you need to start seeing how these people are wasting the money and getting rid of these incompetent management companies that you're allowing to rob people, because if you look in this book and see what you can get in Des Moines for $758, they're price gouging.
Okay, Dorian, I'm going to turn it over to the city manager. What I want to do is hopefully, and I think that this board would like to direct staff to meet with you and see if we can run down some of these concerns that you have, but I'll turn it over to the city manager.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. The issues you raise are important ones. We want to look into those. Elsie Mason is not a facility that we own, but we are --
No, you don't own it. You just get the funds for --
We are involved through the Section 8 program, so there's a tie there. And I'd be happy to have our staff, as the mayor just said, visit with you and talk about the particulars that you have. And we can start that process right this evening. If Laura Graham is in the audience, could just take a minute to visit with her and get her information and follow up? That would be terrific.
I'll move to receive and file the information, have the city manager staff work with her, see if we can --
All right, Dorian, thank you. All right. Any more comments regarding the proposed Municipal Housing Agency annual budget? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the hearing. Could we have a motion to accept a proposed budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, Hallie moves. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Item passes. Item number three is approving a certification to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, of the Municipal Housing Governing Board approval of the amended operating budget for all projects in the fiscal year ending June 30, 2012, and of the proposed operating budget for all projects in the fiscal year ending June 30, 2013. Any discussion by the board? Hearing none, could we have a motion? Hallie moves. Any discussion? Item's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Item passes. Could we have a motion to adjourn the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board? Then moved to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We sit adjourned.
I just think you meant to --
All right. We're going to move into our city council meeting. We'll not quite call it to order. Before we start this evening, we're going to ask for a -- some words from our own city council member, Brian Meyer, and we would ask that those who would like to participate with us to stand at this time, and then we'll start our meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll ask for a brief moment of silence.
We'll call the meeting to order. I will ask the clerk to take roll, please.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Grease?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
Item's been moved.
Seven yes.
Okay, item three this evening is approving the consent agenda. Tonight, those are items three through 40, and these are routine items and will be enacted as one roll call vote without a separate discussion unless someone, either a city council member or someone from the audience, pulls an item for further discussion or clarification this evening. For those of you who are taking notes, item five, council members County and Moore vote no. Item 22, council members Hensley and Meyer vote no. Item 28, council member Moore wishes to speak. And item 32, council member Grease wants to speak. Are there any other items in from three to 40 that anyone would like to pull for further discussion from the audience?
I'll move the remainder if there's no --
All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Item passes. We'll move directly to item 28. Item 28 is an issuance of a certificate of completion for the metro lofts north of Vine Street between Second and Third Streets. Council member Moore.
This is a very good project. Mayor, however, I was over by there and took a look at the street trees, and the street trees don't appear to be planted per city spec, so I'm going to move this for approval pending the approval of the municipal arborist on the planting of the trees.
Any comment, anyone in the audience? Item's been moved with one amendment.
Six yes.
Okay, takes us to item 32. Item 32 is to receive and file the notification on the establishment of the Des Moines Police Department High Risk Youth Fund by the Community Foundation of Greater Des Moines. Council member Grease wishes to speak on this one.
I am going to move this item, but I just wanted to pull it off and just recognize the Knapp family and some other funding, private donations that came in to fund this program. This is a great program that helps primarily troubled areas at the police chief's discretion, and I think this will be great for areas, particularly in my ward, including Evelyn Davis Park. So I just wanted to again publicly thank the Knapp family for their funding on this item, and I will move item 32.
Item's been moved. Any comments or discussion?
Seven yes.
All right, that completes the consent agenda. Takes us to item 41, which is a first consideration of ordinances, mending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Council Communication Number 12-075. A is a traffic control at Southwest 26th Street in Thornton. B is a school loading and unloading area on Grand Avenue west of 17th Street. Item C looks as though it has been removed. Any discussion?
I'll move item 41, 41A and B, and request a waiver of the second and third readings based upon non-prepublished.
All right, I have one question, Ms. Hensley, and maybe somebody can clarify it for us in TNT. The intersection Southwest 26th and Thornton, that's a T-intersection, and I'm wondering, is this a three-way stop? Is this -- there's no sidewalk to the east there on either side of the street. What are we looking to do here?
Mayor, county members of the council, Jennifer Bohack, city traffic engineer. Basically, one section, one leg is unimproved, and therefore, just to clarify the right-ofway at the intersection, the leg that's unimproved is actually part of the through straight, and there was some need for clarification requested by the neighbors at that intersection. So it will be to install a yield sign on one leg to provide right-of-way control at the intersection.
Okay, so that's a yield rather than a stop?
Correct.
On that one?
Mm-hmm.
Because if it's 26, that's moving up a pretty steep hill, and there are certain times over the recent past when that might have been a tough spot to stop.
Correct. It will be a yield sign.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? It's been moved. Thank you. Sorry. I mean, yes.
Seven yes.
All right, that takes us to our communications and reports. We have a report this evening from the Beverdale area businesses to speak regarding the next steps for moving the Beverdale street scape forward. And if we could have our representative step forward, make our presentation.
Thank you. My name is Jamie Warson. I'm here with my wife, Diana. We're property owners and business owners in Beverdale, 2702 Beaver Avenue. And on behalf of the commercial property owners on Beaver Avenue that would be impacted by the street scape project, we present the signed petitions for the purpose of formally requesting the establishment of the self-supported Municipal Improvement District, or Schmidt, by the city of Des Moines. All commercial property owners, including those located out of state, were presented with the information, and we continue to engage in a constructive dialogue to ensure we're addressing concerns and finally see this project become a reality. Six property owners representing 11 of the 20 parcels of property have signed the petitions. This reflects 60.7% of the assessed value and 40% of the property owners, exceeding the minimum, the required minimum of 25% of property owners and 25% of assessed value in establishing a Schmidt. Two additional property owners have expressed support, but due to multiple partners have not yet been able to formally sign a petition. Five property owners representing 14.5% of the assessed value have declined to sign the petition. We urge the city council to act on our petition so that the Beaver Avenue street scape project can move forward. Certainly, Beverdale is recognized as one of Des Moines' most stable and desirable neighborhoods, but to maintain and build upon this distinction, we must reinvest in our neighborhood with the street scape project being a critical component to our future. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm not sure who I give these to.
I'll move to receive and file, or Hallie, you can.
Thank you.
All right, it's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's been received. Thank you, Jamie. Does anybody have any questions of Jamie about the request here? Any comments from folks in the audience regarding the Beverdale Schmidt? Seeing none, I guess the appropriate --
Mayor, I'm sure Hallie has a motion, but maybe I might just start with a quick comment, and I'll address this to the city, but largely to the people that live in Beverdale. This was on our agenda several weeks ago when we received the results of a survey. We had over 350 people, and every business owner responded to a survey, and for years this has been, this project's been the source of controversy as to whether or not it really should go forward or shouldn't go forward. And I think Hallie and I have seen a strong consensus develop in the last couple of months. The survey was clearly one piece of it. Ultimately, as the council knows, these commercial improvement districts and projects don't happen without the neighborhood agreeing to a Schmidt. So to me, tonight, what Jamie and Back Country and all the owners in the Beverdale area have done is really said, "We are for it, and let's put the controversy behind us, and let's start moving forward." It requires some technical work for the city to help create the Schmidt, but I couldn't be any happier. I know there's other business owners here in the audience that are substantial owners, but I'm really thrilled. And it was in, I think, October that Hallie and I met with people from community development and engineering and traffic in the conference room down the hall, and we weren't really sure what would happen from this, you know, taking the temperature of the neighborhood the last couple of months, but I'm really pleased with where we are today, and it wouldn't have gotten here without these business owners that are here today. Hallie?
Yep, I would echo what Chris said. I, I would echo what Chris said. I, I think the thing I hear most about the Beavertale streetscape is, is this actually going to move forward? Is it something that's going to happen? It's something I could get behind? But nothing has happened for so long that I don't want to invest my time and/or resources into this. And I think this is a major step on behalf of the businesses to come forward and say we are supportive of the streetscape moving forward. My motion would be to refer this, the petitions, back to the city manager and also to legal to prepare some of the formal paperwork to have the businesses officially sign on to a, a Schmidt. That would be my recommendation. And I just want to echo what Chris said. We do thank you as property owners for coming out, for presenting this. I think there's real momentum building. The survey was kind of the first step, and now the business owners coming forward and saying this is something they would like to see move forward, I think is a real positive for the Beavertale streetscape moving forward.
Can I add one thing to your motion, Hallie?
You should.
And that, that is that the city manager invite representatives of the business community and the neighborhood association to discuss the new streetscape guidelines. You know, we, this project has been through about three different sets of streetscape guidelines in its long history, but now that we have passed the most recent one, I think it's important for the city manager's office and the neighborhood to come together and make a recommendation to us in terms of a development agreement of exactly what's expected in terms of local private support, and how we might reach out to other people that have funded projects like this before. Polk County's given funding to Highland Park and Ingersoll and downtown East Village. So there, there's, there's sources out there. And if we could have a little plan on the financing under the new streetscape, retire what has happened before, I think that would, that would be the one missing link. And if we could solve that in the next four to six weeks, I think that would be really positive for the project.
Yep. And I think that would add some clarity for the neighborhood moving forward as well. So I'd be glad to add that amendment.
Okay. Any further discussion? It's been moved. Anybody from the audience? None?
Thanks, guys.
Seven yes.
Good job, everybody from Beavertale, and keep the, keep the momentum going. Let's move now to Item 53. Item 53 is items regarding animal control services. A is the first consideration, the ordinance amending Chapter 18 of the municipal code regarding emergency care in fees, reimbursements, and animal relinquish fees and trap deposit. Council Communication Number 12-093. One under that is a final consideration, the ordinance above and the waivers requested by the, the police department. B is an amendment to the schedule of fees applicable to the animal relinquishments and live animal trap deposit. Council Communication Number 12-097. And C is a contract with the Animal Rescue League of Iowa, Inc., for the lease of the animal shelter, animal shelter services, and city animal control services. Council Communication Number 12-091. Is anyone in the audience wishing to speak on these items regarding the animal control Seeing none, let's turn to the City Council. Any ideas or a motion on 53A, B, and C?
I'll move Item 53A, B, and C.
All right. And by the way, that includes A1, which is the final consideration-
Yes.
-above.
Seven yes.
Item 54 was not used. Item 55 is an intergovernmental 28E cooperative agreement with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources and the Polk County Conservation Board to fund Easter Lake Water Quality Plan. Council Communication Number 12-088. Is anyone in the audience here to speak to this item? 28E, Easter Lake Water Quality.
I'll move 55, unless there's comments.
All right. 55's been moved.
Seven yes.
Item 56 is an authorization to proceed with a design, including the issuance of a request for proposals, RFP for professional services for the Walnut Street, Streetscape renovation. Council Communication Number 12-103. Mr. Manager, would you give us quick highlights of this project?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, you're all familiar with Walnut Street. There is a new transit hub that is under construction today that will, in effect, remove the bus transfer function from Walnut Street, which means then that that street will be able to be redeveloped. The hope is that we can put cars back on that street, put a little bit of on-street parking, change it so that there is a significant investment that results from that in particularly the street-level activity there, so you can have some retail development the way the street used to be years ago. That's essentially been impossible, the way the street's been used in the recent past, because of the prohibitions about having cars there. The item that's on your agenda tonight is authorization for us to proceed with a request for proposals. This means we would go out and solicit proposals from qualified firms that would then come in and provide final design work in terms of what would happen on the future of that street. It's a significant piece of work. It has the opportunity to add significantly to our tax base in the downtown, and so there is a return on investment that should occur out of that. Glenn Lyons from DCA is here this evening. I'm sure Glenn would be happy to answer any additional questions. Glenn has been instrumental in getting the project carried this far with some work that he's undertaken. He's now ready, I think, to pass the baton to the city. At this point, the city would really be in charge of the design process going forward. We would do that in collaboration with the business community, primarily because at the end, we'd like to have their assistance in implementing the project. But in effect, that's what it is. It's authorization to proceed with the RFP.
Any questions from the council? Ms. Hensley?
I would just like to add to what the city manager has laid out for us, that it's extremely important that we take this next step, and it's also extremely important that we work hand-in-hand with the business community, as they're going to be integral to the fundraising and as we move forward, trying to put the plan together for how it goes into the future. So I will move this item, 56.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say thanks to Glenn for his presentation. I thought it was very clear. Appreciate what the DCA is doing on this, and would like to encourage the DCA and City Manager's Office to ensure that the proper staff, specifically Public Works, Parks and Rec, and Engineering, when we get into the design phase, are all part of it, to ensure that we're not creating a problem for any of them.
Seven yes.
We have one additional item that was added. This is a, an authorization of execution of titled clearing documents for the sale of 801 University Avenue, which is the former Top Value Grocery Store. It's been on our agenda multiple times through the years. The sponsor to put this forward and move this forward is our Councilmember Grease. Any comments or questions from council? Yes, Ms. Hensley?
I would just like to have an update on the financing and making sure that it's progressing well in that regard. If we could just get information back to all the council members on that.
Mrs. Hensley, councilmembers, we'd be happy to do that. It would be detailing on really the, the exact date for closing and whatever financing's involved in it. But yes, we will put together a report for you.
Thank you.
And I would move extra Item 1.
Could we have a motion to recess as City Council and convene as Board of Health? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We now sit as the Board of Health. The second item on this agenda is approving a legal document to proceed with a court action seeking the authority to abate the public nuisance at the following locations. A is 1521 East Pleasant View Drive. It's a main structure. And B is 3309 First Street. It's a main structure and a garage structure. Again, these are items to proceed with court action to abate that public nuisance. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on either 2A or B? 1521 East Pleasant View Drive or 3309 First Street? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
I'd move those items.
Item 2A and B, Board of Health.
Six yes.
All right. If, could we now have a motion to adjourn as Board of Health and reconvene as Des Moines City Council?
Move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. We again sit as the Des Moines City Council. Should we show that we convene as City Council at 4:59? And if anybody has any questions, I think we will probably be at least 5 o'clock by the time we have to vote on this item. And Mr. Attorney, you concur that we're okay moving forward with this?
The, the hearing can open at 5:00 p.m.
Okay.
So.
Well, let's take a one-minute recess then, and-
Maybe we could ask the city manager to discuss his op-ed piece.
Um-
Would this be the time to do that?
The request is for the city manager to discuss an op-ed piece that we have been discussing at our workshop meetings and also at our, at our legislative committee meeting regarding concerns that the city has moving forward, as it affects revenues for the city, future expenses, and changes that potentially are going to be made by the legislature up on the Hill. So I'll turn to the city manager to quickly talk about your op-ed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. As was suggested, there is legislation pending now proposed by the House of Representatives in the Iowa Legislature, as well as the governor, that would significantly change the way property taxes are collected in the state of Iowa. With respect to cities, frankly, any, any town or community within the city, the specific proposal includes one that would reduce the, or would reduce commercial values by 40% in a rollback formula. There are other provisions of the proposal, but the net effect of it is that for our city, tax collections would ultimately be reduced by up to 28 million dollars per year. Now, there are proposals for backfill that might reduce that, and there's other provisions that would impact as well. But the, the short answer is that there are proposals that are being very seriously considered in the legislature that will have a long-lasting and dramatic effect on our revenues as a city. The proposal that we've been discussing with the mayor and council is to submit a, an op-ed piece to the Des Moines Register, among other actions that we're doing. The op-ed piece would be, in effect, the city of Des Moines' view on the proposed legislation, the impacts on the city, and some of the particularly important background pieces that we're struggling with, that make this particular proposition even more challenging. Two of those factors that make it very challenging for us as a city are, number one, we've had a dramatic reduction in our property values. $336 million of value have been reduced from the tax rolls. That reduces our annual ongoing revenues by $2 million. Now, in a normal year, you'd see about a $2 million increase in revenues, so going from plus $2 million to minus $2 million is about a $4 million swing. That's a huge, dramatic impact on our ability to pay for services here in the city. The other thing that's happened to us, that's had such an impact on our ability to pay for things, is the whole phenomena of unfunded mandates. And in that regard, we've had ADA requirements from the federal government, requirements that we put in certain improvements to achieve ADA compliance. The number there is about $17 million, and we're to put those improvements in over a prescribed period of time. That impacts our capital budget dramatically. We've also been advised that our flood protection systems in the city are inadequate. The council is considering a $20 million investment simply to bring the flood protection system up to stock. There's also requirements from the federal EPA Department, as well as the state DNR, to go through an extensive improvement of our sewer system to the tune of $274 million. So these unfunded mandates, in addition to the fact that we are facing reductions in our values, puts us in a very precarious position. You overlay on top of that the impacts of the legislation to reduce our revenues even further, it, it really leads to a situation where our ability as a city to deliver services is going to be severely impaired if the legislation as currently proposed is adopted. So the proposal, in short, is to tell our story in a letter to the editor or an op-ed piece that, that, that would be, one that would come from the mayor and council. And so perhaps, Mayor, it would be something you'd want to talk about here and give me some direction as to your wishes in that regard. My suggestion to you is the most compelling statement would be a letter that would come from all of you, if you're comfortable doing that. And then I would also suggest that such a letter be distributed to the legislators for the state of Iowa, so that they would have a copy of our opinions on the matter as well. The last thing I'd like to say, and then I'll turn it back to you, Mayor and council, is that one of the things that we're, that I often hear about the city of Des Moines is all we do is say no to these proposals. There's been a lot of discussion about property tax law and the need to change it. It is a terribly antiquated system in the state of Iowa. I believe that's true. I think we have an antiquated system for property tax collections here. It needs to be updated. But frankly, it, it, we've never been called to the table. We've really never been given a chance to sit down with the leadership in the legislature, at least all of the leadership, and have serious discussion about ways to modify that law. So we're willing to do that. We want to work with legislators. We want to work with the leaders, work with the governor's office to craft a proposal that would work for us. But frankly, the proposals that we have before us right now are ones that do nothing but really damage our finances at a point in time when we are facing huge challenges without any changes in state law. So this is all set up, Mr. Mayor and council, to say that now would be a good time, in my view, to send a, a piece to the register to get their word out to the public and also to the legislature, so they understand our view of the matter.
I think the pieces submitted this morning to the, to the council certainly details a lot of the impacts. And the council, I would suggest, we all ought to review it and, and put our input into that letter. Mr. Manager, I would suggest to you that it appears as though it's 1,200 to 1,500 words, and it's got to be in half, I would say, at least. And so we need to do some editing, but I think, think very succinctly state the, the issues as they present themselves in the city of Des Moines. And while we sit here in front of all of you citizens this evening, talking about the impacts on the city of Des Moines, there's another 946 places around this state that are going to be also impacted by the decisions that are made regarding this, this legislation. And some, more or less, the impacts will affect. But I think that what we're stating here clearly is Des Moines' position on it, and hopefully we'll get a piece that has been edited down to a printable length and with the input of everybody here, so we at least send a message registering our concerns to legislature. Anybody? Ms. Hensley?
I'd just like to add, and the city manager and I had an opportunity to visit about this earlier today, and I, I agree with the, the letter, and I think that it, hopefully it could be signed by the mayor and the council, and for an op-ed piece as well as going up to the legislature. I think we need to expand the distribution and look at where, where else does it need to be. But the other thing that I think is really important for- But the other thing that I think is really important for us is that the whole issue is property taxes. All cities are so dependent in Iowa on property taxes. And we need to talk about and really focus on what those alternative revenue sources are so that people understand. Because I think many times, if you're not as close to it as we are, they might not understand the different options that are available. And so I'd like to have us make sure that we clearly highlight those alternative revenues in there. And a big piece of that, as we all know sitting here at the council table, are user fees with nonprofits. That is a significant issue for us here in the city of Des Moines, and that needs to be addressed. And I think that comment even came out at some of the town hall meetings where, for the first time, you clearly heard citizens talking about, maybe it's time that the nonprofits step up to the plate and have to start sharing in working with the cities on how to cover those expenses.
All right. Mr. Manager and council, thanks for the discussion on this, and we'll move forward. If you'd get out sort of a, if you're going to edit it at all, maybe get up your, get your current edit out. And then if the council would send in their ideas as to which parts of it that you think are most significant to put in. But I think the manager has outlined the significant points on it. So look forward to your input. That clearly took care of those two minutes, and so now we're at 5:08, and we're going to open our hearings. Our first hearing item is item 43, which is on the items regarding the issuance of general obligation bonds for the fiscal year 2012-13 for capital improvement budget. And we are going to take each one of these items separately. Item A is a $17,925,000 essential corporate purpose issuance. Item 1 is an authorization for any additional action. The council communication on this is 12-105 for all these items, A through I. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this? Seeing no one, let's close the hearing on that and have a motion and any discussion on item A.
I'll move A.
Item A, any discussion? Item's been moved.
Seven yes.
Item B is an $11,130,000 urban renewal purpose general obligation bond. And 1 is an authorization for additional action. Anyone in the audience to speak on this, the urban renewal purposes bond? Yes. The item for the motion, by the way, the city attorney has asked me to clarify that the motion on A was A and A1.
Yes, it was.
And so...
That city attorney is bright.
The, so we are assuming that B will be B and B1.
And I'll move that one.
All right, B and B1 has been moved. Any discussion? Item C is an $820,000 general corporate purposes library facilities bond, including C1, which is an authorization for additional action. Anyone in the audience to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing on that. Could we have a motion on C and C1?
Move.
Been moved. Any discussion?
Seven yes.
Takes us to 43D, $970,000 general purpose, corporate purpose bond for municipal buildings. 1 is an authorization for additional action, so this is D and D1. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item and hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing. We have a motion on D1, the 970.
Move.
It's been moved. Any discussion? Hearing none, it's been moved.
Seven yes.
Item E is an $880,000 general corporate purpose bond for police, public works, and municipal buildings. 1 under that is authorization for additional action, so this is E and E1, $880,000 general purpose, police, public works, municipal buildings. Anyone in the audience in open hearing to discuss this item?
I'll move E, E1.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? Seeing none.
Seven yes.
Item F is a $260,000 general corporate purpose miscellaneous improvements, and 1 under that is an authorization for additional action, so F and F1. Public hearing is open. Anyone to speak on F and F1? Seeing none. Item's been moved. Any discussion?
Seven yes.
Takes us to item G. G is $1 million general corporate purpose for police station improvements. 1 is an authorization for additional action. That's G and G1, police station improvements. Open the hearing on that. Anyone to speak on police and police station? Seeing none, could we have a motion? We'll close the hearing. Item's been moved.
Seven yes.
H is an $845,000 general corporate purpose for municipal buildings, recreational facilities. 1 is an authorization for additional action. This is H and H1. Open the hearing on that. Anyone here to speak on that? H and H1, general corporate purposes, municipal buildings, recreational facilities.
I'll move H, H1.
Hearing's closed. Item's been moved. Any discussion? Item I is authorizing an issuance of not to exceed $33,830,000 general obligation bonds and levying a tax for the payment. This item, we're not at, is not a hearing item, but is generally announcing that issuance.
Is there not a 1 for this?
There is not a 1. Anybody in the audience have any comment? Seeing none. Could we have a motion on I, 43I?
I'll move.
Wow, that's a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
Months on.
Seven yes.
Mayor, we just decided to issue a lot of millions of dollars in bonds. And for those that are watching on TV and those in the audience, could we ask the city manager to just give a very brief description of what we just did and some of the fine projects that this is going to fund?
Of course, we went over each one of them just a minute ago, but let's have him do it again. Go ahead.
I'll make this very short, Mr. Mayor and council members. The issuance of bonds is a long process. What you did this evening was take the very first step. The projects that are listed here are those in your CIP, which you are about to consider. And I would say to you that as time goes on, you retain the right to adjust these numbers. So there will be additional opportunities for the public to review these projects and for you to make adjustments in the numbers as well. So it's a long process. This is the first step. It's required by law that we do this and get the ball rolling. So that's what we're doing so that we can be timely with the ultimate issuance.
All right. Thank you. Item 44, which are items regarding the budget. A is an amendment of the annual budget for the current fiscal year ending June 30, 2012. Item 44A, we're going to open that for a hearing. Anyone like to make comment on 44A, which is amendment to the annual budget? And this one, Mr. Manager, because we haven't kind of gone over it, why don't you quickly tell us, or tell the general public what we're doing here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. There are three items on the budget approval this evening. The first one, A, is amending the current year budget. You do this every year. It's just simply because during the course of the year, there are adjustments made in revenues and expenses. So this is a statutory requirement that you take this action. That's item A. Item B is really the annual budget for FY14, 13, excuse me. And this is the budget where all the discussion has really taken place. That's item B. That's the annual budget for both the operating and capital budget. Item C is the diminution of employees, which is an implementing action related to the approval of the budget B. So again, three actions. A is the amending the current year budget. B is adopting the new budget for FY13. Item C is the diminution of employees. The city attorney advises that you need to act on each one of these separately.
Mr. Mayor, my conflict of interest will now be on 44C instead of 44B.
All right, we have a speaker.
On B.
On B?
Yeah.
All right, no A. All right, is there anyone to speak on A? Seeing none, could we have a motion on 44A on the amendment to the annual budget for the current fiscal year ending June 30, 2012?
I'll move 44A.
All right, item's been moved. Any discussion? All right, item B is on the proposed annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2013, and the adoption of the capital improvement program, CIP, for 2012, 2013 to 2017 and 18. Council communication, number 12-101. We'll open the hearing on that, and we already have a speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's Marty Mock. I live at 2701 Arthur Avenue. Two parts today. I serve as Chair of Des Moines Neighbors, and as that, I want to express appreciation of that organization for the way that you've handled the budget process and the public hearings that took place in order that we could give input into the process. I thought the process was very good. I thought there's a lot of good ideas that came out of it, and I hope and trust that you also felt that that was a positive thing. One of the sidelines to that, though, was that the public input process was in category by category. In other words, we had each department come up, explain their, above the line, below the line concept, and therefore, the comments remaining in relationship to that particular category. The public had very little ability to discuss credibility of issues outside of categories. In other words, as there's something in one category that has a higher priority than what we'd look and take money from the other categories to make that priority high. And that's the area that I come to you this evening about. As we've been talking to neighborhood people around the city, we've talked about the budget process, the one concern that keeps coming back time and time and time again is the loss of the, of the emergency unit with the fire department. That is one that citizens believe should be maintained. If we needed to have that now, we should be having it in the future because our city is growing, not getting smaller. Our city is getting awards for the ability to meet the needs of the citizens, and yet we have a situation here where we have an emergency unit that's going to be pulled out of service. Now, the list has been changed, I assume it has not. I think that is one area that I know a number of people would like to have you reconsider the possibility of how we could handle that. See, a lot of the things that you do, they can be done and taken out in a year and looked at in another year, in other departments. When we start talking about public safety, you're not talking about what can be done in three months or five months or a year. In the area of police and fire, you're talking about issues of minutes and seconds and whether or not an emergency unit can get there in time to save a life. The savings that you incur by dropping this particular unit is one that's going to be directly affecting the potential of safety for the citizens of Des Moines. You never know as a city how many emergency units you're going to have to send at any given time. You don't know how many fires are going to be going on. You don't know if there are going to be riots. You don't know if there's going to be any kind of public catastrophes. You don't know whether or not in a given hour, you may have two calls or 15 calls. And evidently, the police department felt that there was a need to have a certain number of emergency units right now. And the fact that we're dropping one because of budget considerations is not a good issue of public safety, is an issue of where can we just get by? Where can we get by? I appreciate the fire chief looking and studying and saying, we can get by with one less unit. But public safety is not an issue of just getting by, is again, an issue of minutes and seconds and whether or not one of our citizens will live or die with the ability to get a unit there in time and manner. So my request to you is to look for some way, some possible minute, ability to keep that particular item, whether or not you pull from other, some other budget area in some other department, or whether or not it's necessity to add just a little bit to our property taxes to keep that one extra unit there, which we must have felt was needed at one time, and we're not getting smaller, then that is something that I think is very important to do. I as a citizen am willing to pay a few dollars extra in public taxes, in public property taxes, in order to make sure that my family and my friends have a good chance of living when some emergency takes place. Thank you.
I'm president of the Des Moines Association of Professional Firefighters. I've been a resident of Des Moines 61 years. In the 61 years I've been a resident of Des Moines, I cannot say I'm more ashamed than I am right now to have to stand up here before you. The history of the Des Moines Fire Department during my career has been cut, 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 and it's damn well past time we quit doing that. We've gone from over 350 firefighters down to around 286. 20 years ago, we annexed property in Des Moines. We did not hire one firefighter to staff a new station that was built. We manned it from within. Now, we've annexed again. We've annexed approximately 6,000 acres of property, added over 2.5% to the population of the city of Des Moines, and we're taking fire apparatus, emergency responders, out of the central part of the city. We're putting them in annexed areas to respond. We took that medic unit and moved it up to a place that's going to respond to the annexed area. And now, we're saying to the citizens of Des Moines who have put their whole life there, lived there their whole lives, no, we're not going to man that fire station with an emergency medical unit anymore. That's wrong. Dollars don't equate to lives being saved. Just a few weeks ago, we had an individual jump off the East 14th Street viada. It took a fire company from Station 4 to come respond with us to Station 2 to assist with that. That medic unit couldn't do anything for that individual, but my point is this, when we run, we run a lot. You might have one medic unit going clear across the city to respond from the north side to the south side. Now, we're asking, you're asking us to do more with less. The time has come for you as council people to stand up and say enough is enough. We've helped you with your budget over the years. We saved you millions of dollars by reducing our insurance plan at your request. We did it. Now, we're asking you to stand up and help us out. Thank you.
We'd like to ask, how many more speakers do we have on this particular item this evening? Could we ask you to go over to the south side so we can kind of get in line, we get a sense of how many folks that we have here this evening that are going to be speaking on this particular item? on this particular item? Okay, so we've got three more speakers? Are there more folks here that would like to speak?
Good afternoon, members of the council. Mr. Manager, my name is Kent Balduki. I'm a former Des Moines firefighter and presently a business owner here in the city of Des Moines. And my concern here is to ask you to strongly reconsider the cuts that are proposed for the fire department, as well as the present proposal or future proposal to not fill vacant positions. I echo what Mr. Mock has to say and Mr. Lewis, and that is that we have progressively over the last 20 years added a substantial geographical portion to the city, annexing both southeast, southwest, straight south, now northeast, and I believe north. That whole time, there have been progressive cuts to the fire service. I would ask that, at the very least, that you be honest with the city—with the citizens of the city of Des Moines. That being that fire apparatus be adequately staffed. It's not just about response times because it is inadequate if an understaffed piece of apparatus responds within the acceptable time limits. The apparatus has to be appropriately staffed. It has to have four firefighters for an interior attack. It has to have sufficient firefighters to assist the medics. The medic squads have to be adequately staffed. I ask that you be honest with the citizens of Des Moines. If the fire department staffing is going to be cut, then staff the rigs that are there, but take the vacant rigs or the rigs that are out of service, take them out of the station so that when folks drive by in the neighborhood, they see that instead of two fire trucks and an ambulance are sitting there, they see that there's one fire truck, and they see two empty bays. Or they see when you've taken staff from one station in order to adequately staff the other apparatus, that the doors are shuttered on their neighborhood fire station. Be honest with the citizens. It's not enough to play a shell game and have inadequately staffed apparatus spread around so that we can have adequate response times. If the folks that respond aren't adequately supported, if there's not enough people, if there's not enough equipment to respond to a true emergency, then that's better than no response at all. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Yes, Sean Evans, I live at Royal View, and if you take out that fire station there and the medics there, it tremendously affects us because we've had several calls for medics where we have people that are elderly and/or are disabled that need medical transportation, but it takes a longer time for them to get there when you take that one away from us.
Could I ask, we have a public hearing. Could we have your name and address, please?
Yes. It's 1101 Crocker Street, apartment 321, Des Moines, Iowa, 504-309.
Do you have a name, sir?
Yes, Sean Evans.
Okay, thanks, Sean.
That's pretty much all I have to say. We need the medics up there for those two stations there.
Thanks, Sean.
Excuse me, I'm Gretchen Tagler. I'm with the Taxpayers Association of Central Iowa, 400 East Court Avenue. I want to start by just saying that we appreciate the work that the council and the city manager and staff have done over the past several years in balancing a budget that has many, many demands and what feels to you like not adequate growth in revenue. Our position is that until we, at the state level, can enact some controls on a lot of the spending drivers, you will continue to be in this position and continue to need to be forced to make critical choices such as you're making in the budget this afternoon. I believe that it doesn't matter how much revenue you have or don't have, you're going to continue to experience—because of the laws that we have—you're going to continue to experience these pressures. You have already implemented a number of hard choices over the past several years, 10 really. Hundreds of staff reductions, services have been reduced, all to really sustain just a baseline level of services. Every year, your choices get more and more difficult. I appreciate that you have gone through the process this year and looked at your options. We did spend time with some of the staff to go through those and ask questions and feel reassured about the decisions that are being made. We learned the details about the reductions that are proposed and expressed confidence in your ability to manage through those reductions. Nobody likes the choices that have to be made when resources are limited, but it's important for everyone to remember that they—there are—everything that's in the current budget is there for a reason. So nobody likes some of the choices that are—that need to be made. Nevertheless, they do need to be made, and I have confidence that they—that they can be managed appropriately. So again, while not envying the position that you're in, not being thrilled even about some of the tax increases that are in there, we do appreciate that you've come up with a balance of strategies, and we expect that you will continue to have to do the heavy lifting in years going forward, including looking in additional areas for—as you have suggested in your look ahead in your memo—you will be needing to look at additional areas of outsourcing that haven't been touched yet. There are many, there are some that other municipalities in our area have implemented, and as long as we are in a position where we're finding it difficult to stay competitive with paying the pensions and the health benefits and some of the extraordinary costs that increase every year beyond the base ability to pay, we're going to be needing to look at those. So I appreciate that you've done that this year, and we stand ready to work with you next year—for the budget next year because we do anticipate it will become increasingly difficult, and we want to support you in making those decisions. Ultimately, we do have confidence in the ability of the city to manage those and really want to express support for the budget that you're looking at here tonight and going forward with those recommendations. Thank you.
All right, seeing no more speakers, Mr. Manager, I would again, as we did this morning, I think I'd like to have the fire chief come down. I think it is—this council has asked to get our best look forward, trying to meet the needs of our residents. We've heard from residents, we've heard from certainly the fire folks, we've heard from a former fireperson, we've heard from another resident, and we certainly have heard from the folk Des Moines taxpayers. We want to thank all of you for coming down. I think you've raised some questions that we feel we're getting answers to, and our fire chief, I think, Mr. Manager, we all have thought, as you have, that he is giving us his best recommendation, but I think I'd like to have him go over some of these specific issues regarding the certain cuts that have been made in the firefighters. I believe it sounds like 65 positions or thereabouts have been cut over the past number of years, including that—plus that annexation of around 6,000 acres, and how your new plan addresses some of that moving forward, because I think that as citizens listen to that sort of an argument, I think they want to feel confident that the plan is going to give them the responses at times that they would expect to get somebody there to save a life. And I know that you and I, as well as all the rest of the council, have listened to it, but I'm not sure the general public has. And also, if you would, I know it's been an ongoing concern regarding that federal grant program, Mr. Fire Chief, that we have discussed, and the impact that it potentially could have with follow-up from the state legislature and how we'd have to address those pieces. And I guess the other question is, is it possible, if we were to make application for those dollars, that if we did see the impacts come forward that would be painful to us in not being able to lay off, is there a possibility to get a waiver from the federal government for that plan if, in fact, in a waiver in terms of the layoffs past the two-year program that I think that we were concerned about?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of council, John T. Kip, Chief of the Fire Department, not to make light and in all seriousness, I don't expect my comments to yield any applause. I know where these—where the men and women have been, they're out here to talk to you today. It's a tough place for them to be. Anytime you talk about fire department cuts, it goes to their sense of tradition, their sense of stability, their concept of response and safety and all those kinds of things. I know what it's like to be in that seat. They're absolutely right, the staffing for the fire department has gone up and down. It's been as high as 348 as far as I know. It's been down to about 286. I was a part of an effort, some of the members of this council and former city staff, who took that up to 311 people. That was a different economy. That was a different time. There was a different level of cooperation that led to raising that staffing level to what it was. Since I've been the fire chief, we've eliminated a lot of spots, not things that we would choose to do. It's a bit of the reality of where we are. One of the people who spoke earlier talked about the fact that we have an eighth ambulance today. If it was planned to be that way, then why shouldn't we keep it? The reality of that is, it wasn't planned to be. When we went through the last budget round and had to do reductions, it was a way to limit the reductions and yield something for the service to the city. So we added the ambulance as a way to not cut additional spots. As far as the going from eight ambulances back to seven and how well that balances the workload in the city, our busiest year in history, 19,995 runs, was 2009. That was also our busiest year in history for EMS runs. It was 15,258 EMS runs. And at that time, with that heaviest load, and that was also the same year of the annexations, we were going south, southeast, and northeast, although there's not a lot of population there, seven ambulances were balancing that load. When we make the reductions following your action, what I believe will be your action, again, seven ambulances plus additional paramedic units will be balancing somewhere between 14,700, 800 runs. That's what we've done the last three years. We tend to grow, plateau, peak off for a while. I don't really can explain that, but that has been our history. And when we look back and we see that busiest year, I always want to tell people, "It was just that." One of the things that I looked at in coming to this conclusion was what would the impacts be to the different areas of the city if we changed the number of ambulances that we have and the locations of where those would be? It used to be kind of along a north-south axis that the busiest part of the city was from Station 4 at Ninth and University to Station 6 at Southeast 6 in Hartford. That axis has grown shorter over time. Really, the busiest, most concentrated events of both fire and EMS happen across the downtown area and actually up around the northeast 14th corridor, which is where the newer—the last added ambulance is. When I looked to see where's the balance of EMS alarms, if you were to take the rivers as a line across the city, there was—the ambulances went on about 5,000 EMS or total runs south of that line, and the ambulances went on 10,000 total alarms north of that line last year. So there really has been a shifting north. I'm going to apologize ahead of time because the last time I did this, the shading threw some people off, but I can kind of do it before and after with the ambulances and the engines which are staffed at a paramedic level. On the left is today. Every circle represents a location which has an ambulance. On the left, the two circles that have some vertical lines through them represent a location that also has a fire engine, which is a paramedic level engine. It has the additional medicines, heart monitor, advanced airway devices, and those kinds of things. So of those eight ambulances and two paramedic engines, we have 10 paramedic level apparatus in the city. What I'm proposing, which is on the right, each circle has a paramedic level apparatus at it, the solid circles. Station 9 up in Beavertale, Station 7 up by East 14th, Station 5, 42nd and the freeway, Station 1, currently Ninth and Mulberry, Station 8 on McKinley, Station 10 on Indianola. We'll all have ambulances, and Station 3, Eastern and Hubbell. The four circles that have the vertical lines would also—would have a fire engine, which is paramedic level engine. So we would have seven ambulances and four paramedic level engines for a total of 11 paramedic units in the city. Anybody can tell you, only an ambulance can take you to the hospital, and we will have seven ambulances, the same number that handled 15,258 runs in 2009, our busiest year ever. But everybody in this room who wears a badge or has a Maltese cross will tell you, when it comes to EMS, it is about first arriving response time, it is about starting that heart, getting the oxygen to the muscle, to the meat, saving people with the first arrival of the highest level of care that we can provide. As far as the coverage of paramedic level care services, this will be the best disbursement that we've ever had. The argument comes into where do you put the ambulances? We do not look at where to put ambulances because the city or the council or the manager's staff is looking at a budget. These are things which we constantly must evaluate. Not too long ago, between Station 10 and Station 6, I switched around the apparatus that were there. Station 6 runs out of a low spot. It has more hills. It is more easily congested when it snows. Station 10 has wider streets, longer straightaways, bigger parking lot areas. The station with the hills and the narrow streets needed a smaller apparatus, so we put an engine there where it was a truck, the bigger one. This one could handle the larger apparatus, so we put it down here, and it buys us a few points for how we cover this in relationship to our ISO or fire protection rating. We don't always—we don't do a press conference about it. We just constantly work to make the fire department better with the resources that we have. I would never choose to take an apparatus out of service. As a matter of fact, if you give me about five more apparatus and about 60 more people and about $20 million, I'd be glad to take it off your hands. The fact is, we can't do that. We're in the downturn. We're in the time when we have to figure out how we make this work at a time when we're doing the other things that we can do for the fire department, beefing up our ability to train, replacing a station that needs to be replaced, buying the newest equipment that we can buy, because those are the things that we can do at the time. I think this plan regarding response will result in the same response times that we had in 2009. had in 2009, because it is true, every day of the year, whenever there was one EMS call in the city, the second EMS call requires another ambulance to go from a different location to come towards where the ambulance just left. That's the reality of it. When it comes to applying for grants, the SAFER Grant, the, again, I'll say this, I'll get it wrong, Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. It's a very good program. It used to be a program that started off with a federal grant and then cities match, and over time, the city took on those costs. Currently, there is no match, and the timeframe has gotten a little shorter. It's two-year, it's unlimited on salaries, there's no requirement to maintain the positions. The problem, and one of the speakers tonight alluded to it, and I talked about it a little bit at length this morning, is if you get the grant and you add on the people or you stave off the layoff or however you want to apply that money, that process wouldn't be approved and enacted until this fall. That's two years in which, if the state comes back and lowers our revenues, our hands are tied. At that time, if the revenues are cut, one or two or both of the other arms of public safety in this city, the police department and the public works department, who are also going through the same process we are, would be the places you'd go to because you couldn't touch us, either for the staffing, the safer staffed positions, or the non-safer positions. I do know that there are waivers available on the SAFER Grant. I can't articulate the details of those. I did talk to Diane Breedlove, who is a SAFER Grant staff specialist with FEMA. She didn't sound overly optimistic. I spoke with the International Association of Firefighters, Second District Vice President, Mark Wolbright, the Iowa Professional Firefighters, President Rick Schofield, members of Local 4 about the SAFER Grant. We have differing opinions about the applicability of the grant. Everybody's doing their best, because everybody wants to staff the fire department the best they can. But that risk on the two years in the state revenues, that's something you really have to consider, and that's why I did not recommend applying for that grant.
What's the timeframe to make that application, Chief?
I think that application is actually due today. And that's why we distributed information on it a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. When did they release the grant app?
Actually, I'd have to ask somebody else in the room. I think it's been out 30 days, approximately 30 days.
Okay.
Question.
Yes.
Couple of questions, Chief. You made reference to the ISO rating. Can you discuss that in your plan based upon what you're recommending? Is that changing the ISO rating? Does it remain consistent with what has been previously? Or when will that be determined?
Approximately two years ago now, we had a review which established our ISO rating, our fire protection rating, if you will. It's a level, it's a three. One's the best, and 10 is the worst. That was based on 2009 data. When I first made my recommendation to the council on the above-the-line and the below-the-line cuts, the reason I did not recommend anything to do with a fire apparatus as far as the fire truck, ladder truck, was my concern that if we took any of those out, we would put our ISO rating at risk. Will be due on their schedule to be reviewed again in about three years. There is a hazard if you request them to come in. They come in and they really give you an evaluation. I think our only option at this point is on the EMS side. The points vary from the facilities from which you train, the training hours that you do, the number of fire personnel that you have available for fire, the dispersment of those personnel, the travel distances that would be applicable for each apparatus and how well you cover the city, kind of measured against whether or not there's a hydrant there. All those things are a formula that results in that. We are, for lack of a better description, low on the points for a fire rating of three. There's some work that we can do to shore that up a little bit. That work can't include taking out a fire truck or a fire engine.
But the training facility clearly will be a positive impact on the rating.
The training facility will be a positive impact on the rating, yeah.
Could you then just discuss, there was a comment that was made about making the cuts. If we were successful in getting some legislative change and we were able to look at alternative revenue sources, what would be the impact of making the cut right now, but then being able to bring it back, say, in the year or two of this budget cycle? Could you discuss, you know, what would be the pros and cons of that? You know, would there be problems?
Well, I think it's not so much a pro and con, but the ability to afford, to reinstitute the positions.
No, I understand.
Yeah, adding back will not be a problem. As part of your action tonight, there would be two people who would be waiting for senior medic positions to open back up so they could step back into those roles immediately, and others sure waiting to test for those spots. We can do that very quickly.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
Chief, on the SAFER Grant, have you done any, have you looked in the past years to see how they handled waiver requests?
No, I have not. Previously, on the fire side, the match has always kept us from really even looking at that at all.
Okay, but as you alluded to, they changed that for this year. Actually, this moot point, the grant had to be in by last Friday, but under Appendix 2 that was issued in January of this year, grantee responsibilities, number three, does elaborate that if you hire safer employees, you've got to maintain those and the number that you give when you apply for the grant unless you apply for a waiver. And I really wish you'd applied for this grant with the request for the waiver at the same time, because I have a feeling that they're issuing, they wouldn't put this in there if they're not issuing the waivers. And I think we should have taken advantage of it. The other thing I'd like to say is, I appreciate everything you've done with circles. I'm still surprised at a few areas of town that don't have real good coverage, especially the northeast side, and I hope that after this process is over, we can start talking about building or moving some stations around so that you've got better coverage in the city.
All right. As we talked about it, I believe it was the last council meeting, the budget that you're acting on has the study to look at additional stations in the northeast, primarily the half point between Eastern and Hubble and Brook Run is the priority to fill that out first, yeah.
All right, let's...
May I have a...
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the city council. My name's Travis Hurley, Second Division Vice President of Local 4. The chief stated...
And your address?
What's that?
And your address?
1818 Second Avenue.
Thank you.
The chief states that our busiest year was 2009, with our medic runs being around 15,000. The numbers we have that we pulled out of Firehouse was that this past year that we just had was our busiest year. We have, we had a total of 16,214 medic runs last year, and our total overall responses were 19,599. In 2010, we had 15,920 medic runs and a total of 19,459 overall responses. In there, the chief manages to talk about averages. The fact of the matter is, is that as we sit today, a good portion of the time, we're not meeting response time standards, whether it's on our fire responses. The complete total filling out of the assignment, we're not able to meet a good portion of the time. And that is a significant safety risk for us, for the citizens. So that is all I have for right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have the chief respond to that, please. Could you respond to his comments, please? And why the numbers are different there? I think that's a serious accusation. I just want to have a response on record for that.
Mayor, members of council, John DeKip, chief of the fire department. The numbers that you're looking at on the screen there are what the Des Moines Fire Department reported.
This is out of 2002.
Out of our NIFRS reporting, that's actually taken from our official statistics. I can't elaborate on why someone else would come up with a different number or how they would get to that number. Those simply are what the numbers are. As far as the response times go, I had a very good conversation with the, at the Pioneer Columbus, I had a joint meeting of Southside Neighborhoods, and to their credit, they asked really great questions, and we had a good dialogue about how things work when someone calls. And the response times really are, when you call up the dispatcher, the handling of that call, they get a minute to handle that call and get the firefighters notified. The firefighters get a minute from their notification to get on the rigs and get going. The travel time, once they get going for the first-arriving units, is four minutes. The travel time for the rest of everyone else to show up is an additional four minutes. That's on a fire alarm. It's 20 seconds longer to get out the door on a fire alarm, but on an EMS alarm, it's a minute to take that call, a minute to hear that we need to get going and get going, four minutes to arrive, four minutes travel time to arrive, an additional four minutes for the advanced life support unit to arrive. It's kind of tough to read. For the, for 2011, I don't have the actual number for how long it takes dispatch to handle the call. We tend to go between about 45 seconds and 60 seconds. They really do a pretty good job. The notified to unit en route, that's when the firefighters hear the alarm, to when they get out the door, they got a minute. We average one minute and approximately 30 seconds for a fire call, which is the incident type 111, or one minute and 26 or 7 seconds for an EMS call, the 321 series of calls. The dispatch, that's the numbers on the far left. The numbers on the far right measure from the dispatch saying, hey, you need to get there, to the first unit arriving on the scene. That should total around five minutes. And we make it on the fire side in about five minutes, and the EMS side in about six minutes. So if you're going to say, on the EMS side, are we meeting the initial response time for anyone? No, we'd be one minute off. If you're measuring by, are we meeting the advanced life support arrival time, then we are beating it by two minutes. The national standards on response assume that four people are responding, and there's some other things about those. We meet and not meet those response times. Obviously, in the northeast and the far southeast, we have a tough time out there. It's about a three-mile drive from Eastern and Hubble to Brook Run. That's why we need to put another fire station out there. But we're right in the ballgame when it comes to the response standards. The places where we could improve, really, our station placement and turnout time getting on the rigs, those really are the two things. You can only drive so fast, you can only drive in the weather that you can drive in, but how we plan fire stations and how quickly we get on the rigs are the only two things that we can change at this point in time.
Thank you.
Chief, I appreciate your response back, and I would thank all staff for making your presentations. I think that we've looked at some of these numbers for a few weeks now, and I think that when there's discrepancies, it's better to present them earlier on than the night. If there's some problem between the numbers that he's using, these are the official numbers that he's using to make responses to official data, and if it's incorrect, he needs to know it, and I think we need to know it. And the Monday after, you know, filing is due is probably not the greatest time to make that kind of a presentation. So we encourage you to get, you know, some of this information to staff and to the manager and to the chief earlier if there is a discrepancy, because we understand that they can occur, and I think that we certainly all want to know. If we're making more calls than our records are showing, I think it's fair to all of us, including the citizens, to know what we're looking at, make sure all, we all agree, at least on the numbers we're working with. So I appreciate your bringing those down, but I think that the chief has got his numbers that he has been planning with, and I think we need to, again, make sure we have confidence from top to bottom that we're all talking about the same stuff. So, Chief, thank you. Anybody have any additional questions? On that particular item, and I think that's 44B, is that correct? All right, let's go ahead and close the hearing and ask council if there's, what discussion we would like to have in regard to item 44B on the proposed annual budget for that fiscal year ending July 30th of '13, and the adoption of the capital improvement budget for '12, '13, and '17, '18. Hensley?
I'll go ahead and start. You know, I appreciate everybody being here tonight and understand that this has been a very difficult time. I think the city manager has talked about the number of meetings and the, you heard from Mr. Mock, the number of town meetings that we have had over the course of this period, but I think in all honesty, we began having discussions regarding the budget last year during the legislative session when we were frantically working up the Hill to stave off possible property tax legislation that was going to even be more problematic for us. And I do agree with the comments made. I think that all of the major stakeholders have come to the table in a very big way, working with us, and that was really critical to us in allowing us to get to the point that we are. There's nothing I can say that's going to change the recommendation here with the cuts that are being proposed, but I think that we do have a good balance right now, and there was a lot of direction, there were a lot of discussions that were given to the city manager that we did not want to have all of this be taken care of with property tax increases, because we have to be sensitive to that from the city's perspective. If you look at the, one of the more troubling key indicators for the city of Des Moines is the fact that our percentage of free and reduced lunches has gone up so dramatically in the recent past, which is an indicator that the individuals living within the city, their ability to assume additional property tax increases is really problematic. So I know that we have people saying that we need to increase, that we should just go ahead and increase property taxes, but that's not possible for everybody to be able to afford that, so we have to have a balance there. And I might also add, some of the people that came up to the podium tonight did or did not give addresses, they don't live in the city of Des Moines. And I've had this discussion with some individuals. I understand that you don't live in the city of Des Moines, but it's a lot easier for you to say, raise property taxes when you're not in the city of Des Moines and paying those property taxes. So I have to look at that and be sensitive to that in relationship to all the citizens of the city of Des Moines. I think that the city manager in the blue letter, as he's outlined it, a couple of key things for me would be all of the items that are listed there, that we're talking about a two-year budget, and I think that those are critical items. He talked about them as we, before... He talked about them as we, before we went into the budget item. And I, the budget is always an item that we're discussing. I don't think it's something that's ever gone away, but I guess what I would like to see, based upon all of the discussion that's going on up at the legislature and additional impact that we could have on city finances, as Pope County Taxpayers Association laid out, a lot of this is out of our control. A lot of this is not something that we can take any action on. So we need their assistance. And I think we need to, more aggressively than we ever have, continue to work with them and deal with many of the issues that are outlined in the blue letter. I'm not going to go through all of those right now because they're well laid out, but I feel strongly that we, as a council, that that needs to be our priority, and we need to continue to have discussions on those on a regular basis and put together a plan as to how we're going to make those happen and really force that issue. And I would like to just ask that we, as a council, look at that on a regular basis and that we have at least an update as we begin all of our workshops so that we all know where we're at and who needs to be doing what. Because I think, you know, the staff can only do so much. We need to all be up there working and asking for assistance in dealing with these issues. It's not just the city of Des Moines, as the mayor indicated, there are 940 some other cities out there that are having significant issues. And we need to make sure that our concerns and our solutions are heard, because we do have some recommendations.
Chris?
A couple of thoughts, and I apologize, I'll try and do this quickly, especially if there are points that Christine's already made. Most significant here, I think, is that the city, while you read a lot of headlines about our budget deficit and, you know, lack of money or we're in the hole, those numbers are all looking out as if we didn't do anything to manage our finances. And today, we're looking at a budget that's recommended by the city manager and his department directors that does balance that budget for the next two years, not just one year, but two years. And that is really, really significant. I think the fiscal management that our city has been under, and I know it has been since I've been around, I've watched it be positive, today put us on the cover of Forbes magazine again as the second-best city in America to start a job, to have jobs. The United States Capitol, Washington DC, was number-one capital, the greatest country on earth, and clearly we're the capital, the best state in the country. It feels good that we have so much working in the right direction. It doesn't feel too good that our finances are, I think, under siege by public policy, by the downturn of the economy, and we have to make some hard decisions, and this is not easy to do. I think we have a balanced approach here, which involves some cuts, some increasing some revenue, some new programs that we've started, like the red lights, that has allowed us to not have to cut as deep and not have to raise taxes as much. So I feel like we are moving in the right direction in terms of a balanced approach to our financial condition. I will tell you a couple of things. I'm not excited about the cut in the Fire Department, although I will tell you overall, I believe that this budget and our actions the last year has funneled a lot of money to our Fire Department so they can be of, you know, tremendous high quality and provide great services. With new Fire Station One, the Fire Training Facility, a contract that provides increased wages, the state assessments for the retirement program, we call it 411, are all ways that we've poured more money into the Fire System, and I do feel good about that. I wish we could maintain our employment, but as others have said, that's not possible, really, in this economic environment. I would like to point out that this budget is made easier over previous decisions the council has made. We'd be talking about a much bigger hole today, more cuts in Fire and Police, or larger taxes, if it weren't for the efforts of the council to look at delivering services a little bit differently. I know it's been controversial, but our job is a lot easier tonight because a couple weeks ago, we privatized some work, and I want to give credit to the department directors that are working hard to manage those and find ways to deliver services with less money. It's not easy to do, there's more headaches, but we need to maintain high services at lower cost. And thank goodness we did that, or we'd be talking about a lot more layoffs today, more ambulances being taken out of service. So I'm glad that we're doing those kinds of things to make sure that we have a strong city moving forward. Lastly, we talked about this at some length this morning. I wouldn't mind making the motion for this when everybody is done, because I would like to direct the manager to, as part of our motion, to make regular reports back to the council on the status of the cuts in services that we've provided, to know exactly how it's impacted Fire, we've heard a lot about that tonight, to know what the Blue Barrel Program will do. The manager told us this morning at our workshop that he would consider ways to immediately enhancing or changing that program if it wasn't working properly. I, for one, just like, hey, I voted to change the streetlight program 10 years ago, but it became kind of this negative brand of the city, and I hated that. That's why I voted to overturn it and put money back into it. I worry that not picking up our garbage is the same kind of negative brand, and I want to make sure that our parks and our city is without litter. And if we find that we're not able to do that, I want to change that right away. And so my motion would be that we ask for regular reports and a Plan B if it's necessary that we execute those at the soonest possible time. Thanks for the time.
Right.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll reluctantly support this budget with the protest on the Fire Department cuts, and I will show my non-support for that in item C, in the diminution of the employees, I will not support that. The budget as a whole is, quite frankly, not a good budget, but it's not a situation where we come into this in a vacuum, we negotiate, we ask the city manager to look at things, we talk for several months about how we want to move forward, and this is a compromise. This is a compromise between all seven of us in conversations with the city manager. I want to compliment the city staff for putting it together, but at the same time, I don't like parts of it, but I do like parts of it. And the city as a whole is well-managed. When you look at across the country, at cities our size, larger cities, quite frankly, are going bankrupt. This is a terrible time. This is a terrible economy that we're in when we're looking at the way we finance city services. Again, I wish things were different as far as how we finance city services. And as I said earlier, I reluctantly, reluctantly support the budget, but under protests of the Fire cuts and those specifically at Station 6 with the medics.
Kelly?
I guess I want to echo what everyone else has said. In the last two years being on the council, I think the thing that I've learned more than any other is how much of our budget issues are out of the control of the council. In many respects, it feels like we're fighting the weather, hoping that something will happen and nothing happening, and that's a direct reflection of what is going on at the State House. To Gretchen's point, I think in many respects, we're just putting a Band-Aid on a problem rather than addressing the symptom. When we talk about some of the stuff that was mentioned for the op-ed, the pension issues, the unfunded mandates, the tax structure that's antiquated and creating an even more substantial burden on residential taxpayers, or at least the proposal that's being suggested, it seems like we're fighting a losing battle and receiving deaf ears. But at the same time, I think our taxpayers, our residents, are feeling that same way about government in general, that they're fighting a monster that they can't keep up with. It's not just the city, it's not just at the federal level, at the state level, but sewer, storm sewer increases, electricity increases, water rate increases, gas pump increases, increases across the board, not just at the city level. I think they're facing some of the same deaf ears from government that we're facing at the State House. And to Chris's point, I agree, I think our fiscal house, I would gladly put up against any other city in the country. I think we do a phenomenal job. And it takes tough cuts like this, tough decisions, to receive the unqualified audits that we receive year after year, to reissue bonds so that we get lower interest rates and save millions of dollars. But there's tough decisions to be made. It is a tough economy, and our revenue stream does not come from income taxes the way the state and the federal government do. Our revenues lag behind the general recession, and they're not coming online till now with 28 percent reductions downtown. And it's starting to affect us now, when now the federal government has decided to tighten their belts, when state government has decided to tighten their belts, with some of the funding that we rely on, and now we're needing more than ever. There's tough decisions to be made, and I think the same thing is true of the families that represent our constituents. Based upon that, I don't think I can vote for this budget with the tax increase. I just don't feel comfortable passing it from being our problem, raising revenue in the case where our taxpayers can't unilaterally raise their revenue in the same way that we can. So for that reason, I will be voting against the budget this evening.
Yep.
First of all, I'd like to say that this is the second time since I've been on the council we've had to eliminate some positions, and this just absolutely makes me sick. These are the worst council meetings that I have to attend. I wish I could have just stayed home tonight, but I have a responsibility, everybody here. I want to tell the firefighters that are here, and Chief, you need to hear this, and Rick, I hope you both feel the same way. I'm extremely proud of you. You're not in here asking for a raise, you're not asking for additional benefits, you're worried about your level of service, the service to us and our residents, and I'm proud of you for standing up for that. I will guarantee you, if the only issue we had on the table tonight was getting rid of a medic unit, I would definitely have to vote no on it. What I've heard from the residents, same thing that Marty Mock has heard and I'm sure other council members have, there's a lot of residents out there that don't like this. Two years ago, the manager agreed that when restaffing comes, it's emergency services first. I'm sure that that's the same thing. I'm not going to hold my breath for that in the near future. If Capitol Hill does the wrong thing, this is nothing compared to what we've got coming in the future. I appreciate Gretchen, is it Tagler? I appreciate your comments. I really thought when you were from the Taxpayers Association, you were going to let us have it. And evidently, the folks at the Taxpayers Association understand the bind that we're in and the tough decisions we're having to make tonight. I'm proud of this council. This council has lowered taxes in the last 10 years, they haven't raised them. And to our residents out there, they need to understand, what I keep hearing is, well, you guys don't lower taxes, you raise them. Your tax bill from Pope County has several other entities in there. They have to make the adjustments they do. The residents need to understand, this council has towed the line, and I'm really proud of them. Last but not least, I appreciate all the work that staff have put into this budget. It's an entire package. Parts of it I like, parts of it I dislike, but it's necessary that we move forward. I'm really impressed with the amount of residents that said, you know, a little bit of a tax increase isn't going to hurt, we want to keep our staff on board, we want to keep the level of service up. So with that, I'm going to support this tonight because the residents have asked me to support this. Thank you.
Bob?
Well, I, too, want to express my appreciation for those who have come down tonight and for your concerns about the safety of our residents. I think the rest of the council have done a great job stating the position. But, you know, this has been a long-term process. From the meetings that we started and the residents and the concerns and the suggestions they made to us, they were all reviewed, and our staff has done a great job going through those and working with the department heads. And the efforts that's gone into this, for us to maintain a balanced budget is, you know, almost, I don't understand how many hours could be spent doing that when we've got so many other things going on, but they have done a great job on this. And as one of our council people said, that the increase of free and reduced lunches in our schools indicates what's happening in our community. And as a small increase on our property tax, most of the people I've talked to can appreciate that and are willing to go along with it. But if you get much farther into increasing this, it's just going to be a real upscale battle. So I plan on supporting this tonight. I do have concerns for the firefighters, and I appreciate them being here to support their cause, but I plan on supporting the budget tonight.
Mayor and council, just one comment from my perspective that perhaps echoes some of the things that have already been said, but this budget is not about doing the ideal. If we had all the money we thought we needed, we could do something different. This is a budget that's about doing the most with what we have. The staff, my hat's off to all of them who've done a great job. Chief DeKip has been very thoughtful, I think, has put forward a strong recommendation to make adjustments there. About three-fourths of the discretionary money within the council's general fund goes to public safety functions. We've done our level best, although it sounds different to a lot of people, we've done our best to keep expense reductions within those functions, police, fire, and public works, to an absolute minimum. That's where 75 percent of our discretionary money is, and it makes it tough to balance a budget with the kind of cuts that we're looking at. But nonetheless, that's what we've done. A lot of the cuts that we're talking about here are not ones that we like doing, they are cuts that we have to do in order to have a balanced budget and go forward and to sustain ourselves into the future. Hopefully, as time goes on, things will get better. I think some of the actions that we have identified in our blue letter to council, identified different strategies, several of you have commented on those, we need to work hard on those to address some ways to reduce future expenses or perhaps to add revenues that help avoid these situations that we're in tonight.
Before we have a motion, I've got a couple of thoughts. I want to thank everybody for coming down this evening. Everybody from the Fire representatives and employees, to the residents, to also the department heads, and everyone else that's here to listen and take note on what we're doing. This is not easy work. Year in and year out, we listen either on the phone, or emails, or letters, people meeting us on the street, in the grocery stores, at city meetings, whether it's a neighborhood meeting or a church meeting, all the places that we go as elected officials. And I will say that this council does a good job attending those meetings because we care about the future of this city. And the easiest thing to do is say, I vote no, you know, because I feel the pain of the Fire Safety folks. I understand what their argument is, I understand what some of the neighbors feel, but I think the chief has given us a plan that he thinks will work, and I think that, much the same as the Blue Barrel piece, if we discover that the response times are falling off and it just isn't working, we're going to have to look at a different plan. And I know the chief will be right on top of making some recommendations to get that And I know the chief will be right on top of making some recommendations to get that done, and we'll be right back here trying to figure out how to make that happen. But at the same time, you know, we look at what we've had to do here in this city. Each year, year in and year out, we have to have a balanced budget. It's not like what goes on in other areas of government where we can pass it on and put a whole bunch of stuff to future debt and hopefully wait for the tooth fairy to come along and fix all this stuff. It's just not going to happen. We have to make tough decisions right here to balance a budget, to make sure we maintain credit ratings. We make sure that we are adequately funding. And as I think Brian pointed out a minute ago, there are cities going bankrupt around this country. And as we were at city meetings in our town halls, discussing with neighbors, while maybe we didn't hit all the issues or the subjects in the way that everybody wanted to hear them that particular evening, we listened to what people were saying. And when we kept talking about making more and more cuts, because the cuts we were talking about originally were much more drastic than what we're talking about here, we heard neighbors say, look, you guys got to give up with this. You have to understand that the cost of delivering these services is going up, and we have expectations to meet those services. We want quality fire service. We want quality police service. We want quality public works. We want the sewers to work. We want the parks to be functioning. We want Des Moines to be open for business, and we want this to be a great place to live and a great place to raise a family. And you guys just can't cut. You can't cut your way always to success. So we tried to work out a balance, and we asked the city manager, give us some kind of a budget that looks at maybe a little bit of a raise so we don't have to take another $4 million worth of cuts in staff. How is it that we're going to get there? He's proposed a .34 increase, which was 45 at the first cut at it, and after the council beat on him a while, it ended up being down to 34. I listened to other cities that'll go unmentioned this evening, but about larger metro areas in this state, they're raising their levy this year a dollar and 38 cents. That's a much different number than .34 cents that we're working on. And it's because of our great employees and the work that you have done to work with our management staff and work with this council, to all of us come together and come up with a plan that hopefully meets the needs and the expectations of our citizens. And we're going to be here listening every other Monday night to find out how that's going. We just got our customer survey back. Believe it or not, as compared to other cities around this country, and especially ones our size, our ratings and our customer opinions out there is Des Moines is still delivering public safety. They're delivering the other services at a level that meets or exceeds our expectations. And quite frankly, more so this year than the last couple of years. And this is in spite of the massive cuts that we've had to take. So I'd like to, you know, say that I'm going to be with Hallie and I'll just vote no. That's the easy way out for me. I think that we've got to stand up. We've got to have a plan. I think this is a plan that works. And if it doesn't, the one thing we can do is do more cuts. We cannot raise the levy anymore. We're setting the levy limit. So if there's other things that have to be done and we get hit in the next 12 months with some unfortunate thing that may happen up on the Hill, we're going to have to find some other way to do it other than raising a levy. So hopefully, with this balance between some cuts and a slight raise in taxes in our levy rate, oh, by the way, eight years ago, I think that our levy was about what it is and what we're proposing to go to tonight. So all in all, over the last eight, nine years, we've stayed pretty close to where we started. And this city council has been committed to it. We're committed to delivering the services. And I want to thank everybody because it's only because of the businesses, because of the residents, because of our city staff all working together, that we're able to continue achieving the accolades of a conservative publication like Forbes that says Des Moines and Washington DC are the best places in this country to have a job. So let's continue working together. And I will say that I plan, while I'm going to continue, I don't want to say beating on the city manager, but we're going to continue to have discussions about ways that we can continue to improve the services to our citizens and find new ways in a 21st century to deliver services to our citizens. And I'm going to support this budget, and I want to thank everybody for coming down. And if someone has a motion, well, we'll go ahead.
I'll move 44B. It's the 2013 Des Moines City Budget. I'd like to do it along with directing the city manager to establish a monitoring process of the cuts that we're implementing and in advance, a, you know, a Plan B to respond to any significant reductions of service levels in the areas that we've talked about tonight.
And can I just add, based upon the discussion, that the items that were listed in the blue letter that we'll have discussion at this council table as to how we can move forward with addressing those, which would be alternative revenue sources, volunteer...
A long-term strategy.
Yeah, the long-term strategy. That's a good word.
Excellent. That's the motion with those two caveats.
Six yes, one no.
All right. Item C is the diminution of employees. I'd like to, and that's council communication number 12-082. I would quickly like to have the city manager talk about that. While it is 42 employees, I think that, quite frankly, a number of those positions are empty, and we are actually going to lose a far less significant number than that 42 off the actual sworn staff. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, council members, here's sort of our review of the number. There are 42, about 42, full-time equivalent positions that would be eliminated as part of the council's action on the budget. Some of those positions, most of them are full-time positions. There are a few that are part-time. So it takes several part-time positions to accumulate to one full-time, thus 42 full-time equivalent positions. Of that 42 full-time equivalent, there are 10 civil service positions that are currently occupied by an employee. Those employees, in order to effectuate the budget, council has to act to eliminate those positions. But when you so act, those folks can then bump into other positions within the organization. James Wells, our human resources director, has advised me that in looking at those particular individuals and the bumping rights that they have, it is our hope that all 10 of those folks, as well as the folks they would bump through the process, would land on jobs currently within the organization. Now, this is all made possible because of the fact that we've been able to hold some positions open. Some folks have retired. Other things have happened. So today, we do have vacancies within the organization that we're able to take advantage of. Our goal from the very beginning has been to minimize, if not eliminate completely, the actual layoff of an individual. So again, tonight, what you have to do legally is to go through the act of eliminating the 10 positions. But once you've done that, then they will have rights to bump into other positions. And hopefully, as that bumping process continues, they will all end up with jobs with the city. I can't say that with complete certainty because each of those individuals has their own prerogatives, their own decision-making that they have to exercise. They may decide to do other things. But as an organization, we're going to work with them, and hopefully, all those folks can eventually land on a job with the city organization at present. That would be our hope. So if we can get through this properly, then nobody really actually gets laid off. But we still get the budgetary advantage of eliminating the 42 positions, which was our initial goal.
Can we have the audience to speak on this item? We'd ask if there's others. I see one gentleman going to step up here. If you would kind of get on the side and we can get an idea how many folks plan to speak this evening.
City Manager, Mayor, Council. Tom Hayes. I am the Secretary of Treasurer, CPAC. Our address is 5006 Meredith Drive, Sweetie. You're talking about 10 jobs, and out of those 10 jobs, eight of them are CPAC jobs. And not that I want to diminish the idea of eight people losing their jobs. We get down to it, there's, thanks to the work of Bill Stowe back there, we're looking at maybe three. Three of those people may end up bumping into a position that knocks three people out of their job. It sounds like a small amount, but when you look at the fact that those three people now will be unemployed, that'll be three more people added to the unemployment line. And so I have concerns of that. I also have concerns with the services to the city as we continue to take jobs away. Part of that would be the cemeteries. Those guys have great communication with the public in the cemeteries, the jobs that are being diminished. And you'll be taking that communication away from the public when there's a funeral and burial going on when it's most needed. Plus, they know the cemeteries real well, and so when people get lost out there and they're around, they can show them where the lots are at, you know, where they need to be. You're going to be taking that away from the public citizens, too. Hopefully, it won't be too big of a bearing, but I think you need to keep an eye on it.
Right. Thanks, Tom.
My name is Pat Navin. I'm the representative for the Teamsters. And while I don't live in Des Moines, I represent literally hundreds of people that do. I work at a 24, 25 Delaware, which represents thousands, probably 2,000, city Des Moines residents. And they're fine with paying a little more on their taxes just to save these jobs. I'm not going to go over what Tom has already said. I do want to thank the council members that have worked with us and staying. And I guess that's where I'm at. I just, I hope we can stop this. I think privatization is not a money saver, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Pat. Anyone else? Seeing none, let's close the hearing and ask council for any discussion.
I do have, I do have one thing to say. And that is, I do have concerns, again, over these layoffs, possible layoffs, and the movement of the fire medics. And if there's any way possible to bring those back, just to dovetail off and add the same motion that you had on the budget to do an analysis on the fire medics and have a report back.
All right. Councilmember Moore has registered a conflict on 44C. All right. There has been a request. One of our council members has a quick, kind of an emergency that he has to go to to move up item 48. So if we could quickly, if no one minds, quickly move to item 48. It requires six votes, and Councilmember Mahappy has a conflict, and we need six voters on this item. So a request from Grandview University, rezone 2919 East 14th Street and 1517 Hull Avenue from R160, one-family low-density residential to PUD planned unit development and approval of an amendment to PUD concept plan subject conditions. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. And the waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. And therein lies why we need to move this one forward. So does anyone in the audience here want to speak to item 48, which is a request from Grandview University to rezone? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to move 48, 48A and 48B.
All right. That takes us back to item 45. On the vacation and conveyance of a permanent easement within a portion of the excess Southwest 8th Street right away adjoining 729 Bell Avenue to Kristen Konchelasky for $200, council communication number 12-079. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration. That waiver is requested by the applicant and, again, requires six votes. Is there anyone in the audience to discuss that vacation and conveyance of that easement?
I'll move 45A and B.
Is that yours? I thought it was in the new area.
Seven yes.
46. On the conveyance of 1443 12th Street and 1529 13th Street to the Greater Des Moines Habitat for Humanity, Inc., for $13,500, council communication number 12-078. Anybody in the audience to speak on that item?
I want to move item 46.
All right. 46 has been moved.
Well, I thank Habitat for their efforts to keep improving our housing stock in our city.
They're doing a great job.
They are. Right.
Six yes.
Item 47. On a request from Anthofer Holding LLC to rezone 2814 Southeast 14th Street to remove the VDL Vehicle Display License Overlay District subject conditions. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration, the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Any thoughts on that? Councilmember Meyer?
Is Mr. Andover here? I don't think we need you to, I just, if you want to come up, you can say a few words. Normally, I would not, I'll just say something while he's coming up. Normally, I would not support expansion of a vehicle display lot. But in this situation, they're making substantial improvements to, I don't know, it's a Morton building on Southeast 14th Street. That's the old Roberts Pawn and Gun. And it's currently vacant. And with these additions, I told Mr. Andover to go out and get the support of the neighborhood associations. He did just that, and plus many, many more people supporting his cause. So although I don't like lifting the VDL, I will support this particular project. I'll move 47A and B.
Well, I'm going to vote for this because of Mr. Meyer talked to me about it. I am definitely against additional vehicle display lots along East 14th. Who else supports this?
Item 49. On a request from Thermo King Sales and Service, Inc., to rezone 4975 Hubble Avenue from A1 Agricultural to limited M1 Light Industrial to allow sales and service of recreational vehicles and refrigerated semi-trailer tractor trailers and above-ground storage tanks of petroleum subject conditions. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration, the waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Mr. Mahappy, any thoughts?
I didn't know whether they had any speakers or not. Yes, I do have thoughts.
All right. Any speakers on this item?
Okay.
If you can address any questions, if they have any.
That's fine. And seeing none, they maintain their property in real good shape and that, and this is an expansion of what's been there for a number of years. And I certainly will move 49A and 49B.
Item's been moved. Anybody have any questions or thoughts or want to question the applicant? Seeing none?
Six yes.
All right. Item 50. On a request from... On a request from JZJL Holdings LLC doing business as QCSA Direct to rezone seventeen hundred East Aurora Avenue to revise the limited M-two heavy industrial classification with conditions that prohibits the use of property as a junk or salvage yard to allow a towing and storage yard for motor vehicles and trailers, including wrecked or damaged vehicles, provided there is no salvaging, stacking, or crushing of the vehicles on the property. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. Anybody here to speak on this item? Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Dan Manning, three seventeen Sixth Avenue, City of Des Moines. Here with me this evening is my partner, Joel Templeman, and Joe...
Zraslick.
Zraslick, thank you. This request is concerning the property at seventeen hundred East Aurora. It's a property that we've visited with Mr. Mahaffey about, and that we simply want one simple modification to the conditions that are already in place upon this property. The property is zoned M-two. It would remain with that zoning M-two. The only change is that the issue allowing, which presently, what is allowed, is the storage of motor vehicles in this location. We would simply add the words that would include wrecked and damaged vehicles. The purpose for this request is to allow the applicant to obtain a recycler's license in order to function at this facility. What would happen at this facility is car, automobiles, trailers, things like that would be stored at this facility. But this is just a first step in the process. We also have to prepare a site plan that would be approved by the Plan and Zoning Commission, and also go to the Board of Adjustment and obtain a conditional use permit. What we're going to be doing at this location, it's approximately seventeen acres, we will be upgrading the site, we'll be bringing, at, once it's in place, there'll be approximately eight to fifteen employees are going to be working at this location. What will happen here is there will be internet sales, there would be internet auctions of vehicles, but there'd be no auctions on-site. But what we have is, I can show you the drawing of the site, so we can get an idea of the property that we're dealing with. As you can see, we're talking about, this is East Aurora here to the south. This area, which includes the existing building on-site and the area around it, it's approximately seventeen acres. I don't know if we can go in far enough with this particular drawing, but what we're emphasizing is that the property is already zoned M-two. It would remain zoned M-two. We would have, as a part of the site planning process, there, I think maybe you can see that a little more clearly, maybe, I'm not sure if you can see that or not, but the entire area is approximately seventeen acres, sixteen point eight acres in size. It will be fenced, there will be all of the site plan requirements that, for this site, would be implemented, that would be approved, and obviously reviewed by the Plan and Zoning Commission, and then ultimately, any conditions that would be added to that site would be added through the review process of the Board of Adjustment. The property, just so they understand the history, is when it was annexed into the city in nineteen ninety-one, the owner of the property agreed to certain conditions in addition to the M-two zoning. And what we're doing today is simply making a five-word modification to the conditions that are already in existence at this site. We take the, kind of show you just exactly the language that we're changing. Actually, we're just not really changing, we're adding to it. I don't know if we can go in any further, but what we're showing here is A through G, a list of the conditions that the property owner agreed to, the property owner being the Common Stock Trust of Ellis I Leavitt, still the owner of the property today. They agreed to these conditions in addition to the M-two zoning that was approved at the time the property came into the city back in nineteen ninety-one. In two thousand and five, the language that we see under paragraph E, junkyard or salvage yard, that's not allowed at this site, we want to emphasize, there's no junkyard or salvage yard allowed at this site. However...
Did you say a couple of comments?
Storage, the property could be used as a towing and storage yard for motor vehicles and trailers. Now, that's what's in existence today. What we were adding, and what we're showing here in the application that we've asked for, it would include wrecked and damaged vehicles. That's what we're adding, that's what we're asking that the council approve, that language, that those official words. Dan, let me quickly ask you if you'll remain right there. I think our board councilperson and maybe some others have reviewed this, and I'll ask Mr. Mahaffey if he has any questions on this.
I don't really have any questions. Well, I do have one question. I think one of the things, you have to have an impervious lot all under these vehicles, there's no dismantling of vehicles, and that is just going to be a storage, and like you say, internet sale, so to speak. And I'd met anyone over these, and I think it's a good use of this land out there, it's been vacant for some time.
That would be accurate. Those issues would be taken up at the time that we bring in a site plan to the Plan and Zoning Commission. But that's, that is accurate, Councilmember Mahaffey.
And the letter that was sent with the property, I believe it's to the West, they were satisfied with your approach to this, and they just had some concerns, and they were all satisfied.
We had a neighborhood meeting, and we addressed the concerns that were raised at that neighborhood meeting. That's correct. Bob, you're comfortable with the rewording of E?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dan, thanks. All right. Is there anybody else speak to this?
I just want to be sure, when you say internet auction, that's for whole vehicles or what remains of them after a wreck? It's...
That's correct. There's absolutely...
No parting out whatsoever.
It's an absolute commitment that that will not happen, Councilmember Moore. All right. Having heard that, seeing no more speakers, do you have a motion, Mr.?
Sure. I will move fifty and fifty-A and B.
Six yes.
All right. Let's move item fifty-one, which is on amendment to a lease and service agreement with Metro Waste Authority for sixteen oh one Harriet Street, to add an additional eight point two eight acres for the operation of program for the collection and processing of yard waste materials. Is there anybody here to speak to that?
Six yes.
Item fifty-two is on the application of United Cab Limited to increase the number of taxi cabs operated under their certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate taxi cab service from five to ten taxi cabs, council communication number twelve dash zero seventy-six. Is there anyone here to speak to this?
My name is Rick Howe, with Howe Cuttingham Low &amp; Kelso Law Firm, twenty-eight twenty-four Hundred and Fourth Street in Urbendale, five oh three two two. I am counsel to United Cab Company and its owner, Mohammed Habib. Our presentation tonight will be real brief. Mohammed came to the United States in nineteen ninety-seven. He had been a cab driver and a cab supervisor in Kenya, and his dream was to come to this country and to start a cab company. He came, he worked four or five months in the city, became aware of what the circumstances were here, saw a need, and filed an application late in two thousand and ten. We brought on a group of public witnesses for the council, and the council approved the application in October of two thousand and ten, and, excuse me, two thousand and eleven. We began service, we've operated for a year, and things have gone well. We have stretched and stretched to try to meet the service. It was, it was our position that there was a real need in the city. And there are other people that thought we were just dividing the same pie, but our traffic has increased considerably. And the package of our seventy-page application, it's a month-by-month summary by cab that shows the dramatic increase, and I have a chart here, I hope we'd be visible. And this begins the first full month after the city council approved our application, and shows the traffic through the end of October, and basically...
You're talking about end of October of eleven, not twelve? Is that correct?
That should be, that should be eleven.
And so the beginning is probably ten rather than eleven?
That's right. It would be ten to eleven. It's a twelve-month period from the beginning of November through the end of October. I apologize for that. The first month, our total number of trips for our five cabs were seven twenty-nine. By October of two thousand and eleven, it was thirteen hundred and sixty-six. So you can see the increase from month to month. It was our position that a new cab company that was staffed by immigrant people would provide a unique service. Many of our drivers speak three and even four languages, and to serve people in some areas of the city, we found that to be very helpful. The city gave Mohammed the opportunity, I think he's capitalized on it, and I think he has done a good job. We have worked very carefully and very cooperatively with the other cab companies, and I think we, things are a little bit unusual. In my transportation practice, there is a lot of competition and often hard feelings, but the cab companies seem to be working well together. To the best of my knowledge, there is no cab company opposing this application from going to five to ten cabs, and we're proud of that. The city had asked us to participate in funding the steward at the airport, and we've done that. And then, late in two thousand and eleven, we also offered to help support and fund the cab steward in the Court Avenue area, and we're doing that on a monthly basis. So we're working with them, and we're pleased with the result.
All right. Should we, is there anybody else to speak on this? It looks like we have maybe one of your supporters coming up here.
My name is Mohammed Habib, and my address is ten oh two Twenty-Eighth Street. I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity last year. I don't really get to thank you guys that much, and I want to say thank you very much to make my dream come true, and I'm going to work harder to achieve all the dream I dream on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mohammed.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, William Lilis, three seventeen Sixth Avenue, Suite three hundred. We're appearing on behalf of Trans Iowa. With me this evening are representatives of Trans Iowa. They do business in Des Moines as Yellow Cab, also as Capital Cab. Council will well remember, we remember, all of the various discussions that came before us. I know, I miss those days. So I want to surprise you and tell you that our client does support the application of United Cab. We've talked with Mr. Howe, we've talked with the, with also Mohammed, and the reason we're supporting this, we wouldn't necessarily support some of the other applications for five more cabs if it was other parties in the city, but this particular cab company has worked very, very harmoniously with us, and the good news, our client tells us, is that since we've been here, the last time, business has improved. Maybe with the gas prices coming up, business won't be as good, but it has been good. United Cab Company has been very, very cooperative with our client in working at the airport and on Court Avenue. Cab steward situation has worked very well. They've been very, very cooperative, and we enjoy, although they're a competitor, don't get us wrong, we have enjoyed a good working relationship with that. So with that, the fact that there would be five more cabs, we understand the, but we also understand that they have to prove their case, and it appears to me that they have worked toward that, and we concur with their application. And in this instance, we might not feel the same way if there's another cab application in the future, so I don't want to go on record as making this a blanket support, but we do support the request of United Cab. We would welcome your questions, Mr. Mayor, members of the council also.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
I think there's a couple of questions, maybe. Hallie has.
I'm sorry, I did not have a question.
Okay.
I was going to make a motion.
Okay.
I'll move if there's no question.
All right. Item's been moved.
I just wanted to add, Mohammed, we did give you an opportunity last year, and I think you have capitalized on it. I've heard nothing but good things from your company, and to have Mr. Lilis's client supportive of you moving forward, I think...
Thank you.
...demonstrates that, and so I think you've done a great job.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I can say one other thing.
Did you want to have us revote this?
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll accept.
Six yes.
It's nice to add service to the city without having it cost anything.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That is a six oh vote. Could somebody give me a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we sit adjourned. Thank you all for coming down this evening.